Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for May 23, 2022. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to the employment review of particular individuals and negotiations under the Taylor Law?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for May 23, 2022. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance which will be followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, the God, indivisible, liberating, justiciable. I just want to apologize that we are a few minutes late, we had a few things to take
care of. Best thing about May and June is we get our happy meetings, so we're going to turn over the superintendent for our tenure night, right?
Good evening, everyone, it's so great to see so many people here at tonight's meeting, welcome. What a special evening. So I'll begin just by welcoming members of our Board of Education, my colleagues from district and central office, thank you for being here this evening, my colleagues from each of the school buildings, thank you so much for joining us this evening, and to our tenure candidates, congratulations. To the families and friends of our tenure candidates, because you didn't get here alone. When, as an elementary school teacher, those who are getting tenure and you've taken over the dining room table to do your report cards, or you're up late planning lessons and grading tests so that you can get assignments back to your students on time. You didn't do this alone. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the friends and families of our tenure candidates who are here this evening, and let's recognize you with a round of applause. This evening marks a very special moment in your career. To get to this point, you had to be extraordinarily successful in a very rigorous probationary period. The probationary period that included several formal and informal observations, and I know exactly how much effort and planning goes in to those formal observations. You've had building administrators visit your classroom day in and day out, you've had the district office drop-in where all of a sudden I show up at your class and say hello, you've had my colleagues from central office come over, you've had your APPR programs and evaluations, and through all of that, you've met a very, very high standard of excellence, and we congratulate you tonight. You worked tirelessly to prepare lessons, deliver instructions, and support the students you work with each and every day. You've demonstrated that you're highly capable of being innovative and inspirational. Thank you for turning the lights on because I couldn't read what I was writing. You may say he's not looking down, I can't read it. However, tenure is not a destination. Tenure is, now I'll start reading. Tenure is a checkpoint to be celebrated and then to continue on in your journey. Tenure is the beginning of yet another chapter of your careers. Expectations are now known, you know the district, we know you, but I will let you know that as tenured members of our faculty, my expectations of you are even higher. I expect you to continue to put children first and continue to learn new instructional strategies, strategies that will enhance the learning of your students. I expect that you'll take on a mentoring role to newer faculty, just like the veteran leadership did for you, and I do want to acknowledge some of the colleagues in the audience this evening, thank you for being here, thank you for the support that you've provided to our tenure candidates, I just want to recognize you all publicly with a round of applause. I expect that you'll continue to serve as a source of innovation and inspiration for those around you, and I expect that you'll always demonstrate integrity, trustworthiness, and respect in every interaction that you have. I have full confidence that you'll meet these standards of excellence. I'm going to leave you with just one takeaway before I start introducing the candidates. Always be grounded in what's best for children, never lose that. When the best interests of children guide your decision-making, you can never make a bad choice or take a wrong turn. Teaching has always been very complex work, and it's become even more complex and challenging in recent years. You've all done a remarkable job, and I trust that you'll continue to give your children, and I use this expression all the time, 10 days out of 10. The children deserve your best, 10 days out of 10, and that's why you're here tonight. At this time, what I'm going to do is call up the tenure candidates by building to stand beside me to be recognized. I will read just a very brief recommendation, or portion of your tenure recommendation that I crafted over the weekend. I took the words of some of my colleagues in the buildings because they wrote such wonderful tenure recommendations for each of you, and will acknowledge you in front of everyone, your families can take pictures and celebrate the moment. I'd like to also invite, we have our district PTSA president here, Liz Ackerly. I'd like to, Liz, would you like to join me on stage with the, wow, okay, great, thank you so much. So Ms. Ackerly will join me on that end of the stage in the wing, and we will begin by introducing the tenure candidates from Brookside School, so I'd like to begin by inviting Mrs. Herbie, Mr. Delgado, and Ms. Murphy to join me on stage. Mrs. Herbie is a third grade teacher at Brookside School and is incredible in every regard. I especially enjoy visiting her classroom during ELA instruction, where her passion for reading and writing is remarkable. She has a love for reading, and her students in turn also develop that same love and passion for reading and writing. In the words of Brookside Principal Ms. Amerling, "Ms. Herbie is a highly professional and committed teacher. She has established herself firmly as a team leader with her colleagues and continually pushes herself to explore and learn. I am honored to recommend Ms. Herbie for tenure this evening." Congratulations. I'm pleased to recommend Mr. Justin Delgado for tenure this evening. Mr. Delgado is a special education teacher at Brookside School. Mr. Delgado is remarkably talented in working with students of all abilities. In my observations of his classroom, I've observed a talented professional who's patient and kind and demonstrates a genuine sense of care for his students. Of Mr. Delgado, Ms. Amerling states, "Mr. Delgado is an active, bright, and talented professional who is continually seeking to improve his practice. He is genuinely reflective and continues to immerse himself in learning about curriculum, New York State learning standards, and reading instruction. Takes a prominent and active role in the special education department. Honored to recommend Mr. Justin Delgado for tenure this evening." And finally, I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Jenna Murphy for tenure this evening. Ms. Murphy is a second grade teacher at Brookside School, she's a dynamic educator who brings a great deal of energy to the classroom. Ms. Murphy has really embraced the eSteam platform that we have here in Yorktown, one that I'm very proud of, and has continued to seek ways to integrate empathy and Steam into her instruction. Collaborating with her colleagues, a library media specialist and technology coordinator, Ms. Murphy has developed myriad eSteam opportunities that have facilitated students' learning and growth. In each of my visits to Ms. Murphy's classroom, I observe students who are engaged in the lesson while experiencing a genuine joy of learning. Honored to recommend Ms. Murphy for tenure this evening. We'll now move to our, and I'm going to ask the tenure candidates from Brookside to just sit in the first two rows here, because at the end, what I'd like to do is get one group picture of all of our tenure candidates, so if you go back and sit back there, it's going to be a little more challenging, so we'll have everybody sit in these first two rows, take one picture, and we'll move forward. So at this time, I'd like to invite the tenure candidates from Mohansick School to join me on stage, Mrs. Luongo, Ms. Spillman, Ms. Alloy, and Ms. Yates, please. Ms. Luongo is a third grade teacher at Mohansick School, and I will tell you, as superintendent and as dad, Ms. Luongo is beloved by her students, and for good reason. She is a champion of children, her lessons are always thoughtfully planned, her instruction is always skillfully delivered, and her interactions with students demonstrate everything that we would want for our own children. I am so honored, I can talk about Ms. Luongo for quite some time, but I'm going to spare you that, she is just such a gem in the classroom, we're fortunate to have her here in our classrooms at Mohansick, and I'm honored to recommend Ms. Luongo for tenure this evening. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Spillman for tenure this evening. Ms. Spillman is a reading teacher at Mohansick School, and she demonstrates a love for teaching, reading, and writing like you haven't seen in a classroom. Ms. Spillman is understanding of the developing brain cognitive constructs of a young reader, she's thoughtful and insightful, and in the words of Mohansick School Principal Ms. Susan Berry, "Ms. Spillman digs deeply into her experience and knowledge base to provide a program that addresses students' needs in reading." I am so pleased to recommend Ms. Spillman for tenure this evening. I'm honored to recommend Ms. Alloy for tenure this evening. Ms. Alloy is a kind, warm, and caring person who loves working closely with young children. Mohansick School Principal Ms. Berry's tenure recommendation of Ms. Alloy perfectly summarizes her work at Mohansick. I quote, "She delights in their preciousness, energy, and the way in which they wholeheartedly love to learn. She enjoys each day with her students and brings her own optimistic and positive energy into her interactions with them and with the teachers with whom she works. Ms. Alloy demonstrates a commitment to the school by always accepting new challenges with excitement, grace, and professionalism. She's reliable, dependable, always seems to handle unexpected situations with calmness and a can-do attitude." I agree, I'm honored to recommend Ms. Alloy for tenure this evening. And finally, for Mohansick School, I'm honored to recommend Ms. Yates for tenure this evening. Her principal calls Ms. Yates "one of the most incredible people that she has the distinct pleasure of working with." There are so many reasons why Ms. Yates is an exceptional person and an outstanding employee in our district. Her circle of influence at Mohansick is extraordinary, she's integral to so many aspects of the organization, and that's because of her varied skillset, intellect, and competence. She's served in so many different capacities and in very significant ways. Her primary role supports our work in eSteam and the eSteam Lab, which again is something that is very near and dear to me, and Mrs. Yates has really propelled that work forward in the eSteam Lab at Mohansick. She's able to support other areas as well, school attendance, student attendance, coordinate, bus dismissal, and communicating in the office when needed. She does all of this without hesitation for the good of our students and our district. Honored to recommend Ms. Betsy Yates for tenure this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite our tenure candidates from Crumpon School to join me I'm honored to recommend Ms. Angelata for tenure this evening. I don't have notes prepared because I have one story about, that I'd like to share with you. I observed Ms. Angelata formally, as I do every non-tenured candidate in the district. When I came back to the office to type up the observation, my assistant was relatively surprised that I only wrote a few sentences for the observation, because my observations are generally three or four pages of written notes, and when she pointed out that I only had about three sentences written, I said, "You know what happened? The lesson was so good that I got so caught up in the lesson, I forgot to take notes." And so I relied on memory. That, I've been writing observations since 2010 or so, it's never happened to me. That's the first time that I've been so engaged and just so captivated by a lesson that I didn't even take notes on it. So I am so honored and delighted to recommend Ms. Angelata for tenure this evening. I'm honored to recommend Ms. Nicole Toco for tenure this evening. Ms. Toco is currently working as a school psychologist at Crumpon School, and during her probationary period, Ms. Toco has had assignments at Mohansick School and at Yorktown High School. Her versatility as a school psychologist has afforded us the opportunity to have Ms. Toco seamlessly fill in for both anticipated and unanticipated vacancies in our district at a very high level of excellence. Ms. Toco is able to skillfully work with students from kindergarten through 12th grade, and she has demonstrated that extraordinarily talent year after year. As Dr. Roberts wrote in her tenure recommendation of Ms. Toco, "Each day she arrives at Crumpon Elementary School early and leaves late to ensure that she is ready to support her students, call parents, collaborate with colleagues," and what I would tell you is, as a school psychologist, there's an art and there's a science, and Ms. Toco and I have discussed this, and she has mastered both at this point, the art and the science of school psychology, and that is probably the highest compliment that I can pay a school psychologist. So I am delighted to recommend Ms. Nicole Toco for tenure this evening. We will now recognize the tenure candidates from ME-SMS. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Copeland, Mr. Childers, who I don't believe is here, oh, I do see him here this evening, wonderful, Ms. Kemske, Ms. Maritz, Ms. Russo, and Ms. We'll begin with Mrs. Copeland. I am pleased to recommend Ms. Copeland for tenure this evening in the area of Assistant Principal. Ms. Copeland has become an essential part of the ME-SMS administrative team, and she's been able to successfully initiate, monitor, and complete the many essential goals and responsibilities associated with operating the middle school. She has worked very closely with the building team and with the central administration team, all in the interest of supporting our students. Ms. Copeland has worked diligently to create an environment that's conducive to both teacher improvement and student achievement, and as I go down the myriad tasks that Ms. Copeland is responsible for, I'm just absolutely impressed by the commitment, the dedication, whether it's a DASSA investigation, afternoon bus duty dismissal, and everything else that happens throughout the course of the day, we certainly appreciate all of Ms. Copeland's efforts, and I'm pleased to recommend you for tenure this evening. So I'm a little out of order in terms of the order in which I'm recommending the candidates. I wrote this over the weekend, and Mr. Childers, your name popped into my head next, and I am delighted to recommend Mr. Nathan Childers for tenure this evening in the area of music. Mr. Childers has consistently created a safe and challenging learning environment for students at ME-SMS. In addition to his band classes, Mr. Childers also teaches chorus classes, continues to use his expertise to help students thrive in all areas of music. Mr. Childers shares his love of music, commitment to developing strong musicians with his children on a daily basis. When I visit Mr. Childers' classroom, I see a love for learning. I see children who are enjoying learning, who don't have to take up an instrument, who choose to because of the love of music, and Mr. Childers has a role in that, and that's special. Mr. Childers is dedicated to providing students a engaging experience while also never losing sight of the foundational elements of good music. Mr. Childers' band and choral performances include not only diverse musical selections, but also the artwork and poetry of his students, and I love that addition to our music program. I am delighted to recommend Mr. Nathan Childers for tenure this evening. I'm honored to recommend Ms. Dawn Kemske for tenure this evening. Ms. Kemske currently teaches Math 8, Integrated Algebra, and eSteam. Ms. Kemske creates goals that demonstrate that in-depth understanding of the content and students whom she teaches. Her lessons are purposeful, well-designed, and always engaging. Ms. Kemske and I have had the conversation about the relevance of mathematics, and I love to see how she's integrated the feedback into her lessons, and we all, I'm a former math teacher myself, so Ms. Kemske and I have good conversations about math, and it's always student-centered, it's always the why, why is this important to you? And Ms. Kemske has done such a solid job of instilling that in students. Objectives and activities are always very clear and very engaging. Ms. Kemske, I'm honored to recommend you for tenure this evening. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Michelle Maritz for tenure this evening in the area of special education. Ms. Maritz does an outstanding job in her role as special education teacher, providing small group reading instruction, paying very, very close attention to a student's IEP, and doing such an outstanding job in advancing reading growth and making progress using the Wilson Reading Program. Mr. Rosen best summarized Ms. Maritz's daily instruction by stating, "Ms. Maritz clearly communicates the instructional purposes of her lesson to the students and how the skills they learn will be skills they will use throughout their lives." It's perfectly put. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Michelle Maritz for tenure this evening. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Donna Russo for tenure this evening in the area of Certified Teaching Assistant. Ms. Russo worked in our 812 classroom where she served as the classroom CTA, providing specific individualized programming to the students in our 812 classroom. Ms. Russo helped to develop and execute plans for students. She understands how to intervene with challenging behaviors and utilizes different methods of intervention and reinforcement. Ms. Russo currently serves as a CTA assigned to a new student, and she has been remarkable in this new role and has embraced this new role. Ms. Russo is so reliable, so supportive, so patient, and such a team player, and I'm honored to recommend Ms. Russo for tenure this evening. And finally, for the middle school, I am delighted to recommend Ms. Susan Skrelia for tenure this evening in the area of special education. Visiting Ms. Skrelia's class is one of the most joyful experiences that I've had throughout the course of this year. I learned a little bit about Burger King menus and the ordering and how that whole process works, but Ms. Skrelia does an excellent job of engaging her students, providing them with real-life experiences and connections to various subjects. Her genuine care and respect for students is unlike anything that you've seen. She's flexible and creative, she gives countless hours to providing her students with a wonderful school experience. The learning tasks, the activities of her lessons are aligned with the instructional outcomes, and they're designed to challenge student thinking. Ms. Skrelia is deeply reflective, is always striving to be better. We are so fortunate to have a teacher like Ms. Skrelia here with us in Yorktown, here at the middle school. Those aren't just my words, but I believe I read that in your tenure recommendation as well from Mrs. Horowitz. Congratulations, and I am honored to recommend you for tenure this evening. At this time, I would like to invite Victoria Garrett, Jamie Saliberto, Justine D. Gregorio, I am delighted to begin with recommending Ms. Victoria Garrett for tenure this evening in the area of Assistant Principal. Ms. Garrett has just demonstrated excellent leadership skills throughout her probationary period, and prior to that point where she served as a teacher in multiple schools within our school district, Ms. Garrett has excellent communication and problem-solving skills, and coupled with her keen understanding of the district policies and legal statutes, contribute to the excellent administrator that she has emerged as. Ms. Garrett's involved in nearly all elements of the day-to-day operations of Yorktown High School. Her steady and consistent presence is a great source of assurance for faculty and staff and deeply appreciated by all. Using the words of Yorktown High School Principal Mr. DiGennaro, "Going above and beyond is something that comes natural to Ms. Garrett." She enjoys and takes pride in supporting and assisting our students. Ms. Garrett is a dedicated and dynamic educator who is committed to our students, our profession, and our school." and our school," end quote. I am delighted to recommend Ms. Garrett for tenure this evening. Congratulations. Next, I'm happy to recommend Ms. Jamie Siliberto for tenure this evening. Ms. Siliberto is a visionary. If there's one word to describe Ms. Siliberto, it's visionary. There are big ideas and big plans, and those big ideas and big plans become learning opportunities for our students. If you step into Ms. Siliberto's classroom, regardless of what content she's teaching, regardless of what class it is, what grade level, you'll see a lot of energy, a lot of passion, and a lot of student engagement. Those are three certainties, day in, day out. She maintains excellent rapport with students while demonstrating a kind and empathetic art. She is so hardworking, student-centered, and contributes to our school community by being present at so many different events and happenings within our high school and our district. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Siliberto for tenure this evening. I'm honored to recommend Ms. Justine D. Gregorio for tenure. It's with great pleasure that I make this recommendation because since her arrival, Ms. D. Gregorio has been such an integral member of not only the clinical team, but the Yorktown High School and Yorktown Central School District community. She is highly visible. She's engaged with every group in our school community. She's expanded our services and offerings. She works collaboratively with members of the clinical team, and I've seen that firsthand as they problem-solve to make sure that every single student is supported. Her success is largely based on knowledge, skills, hard work, and compassion. She is extremely intelligent, and that intelligence is only matched by her love for children. She's process-based, and she works so closely with Mr. DiGennaro and his team and all members of the clinical team, and I am honored to recommend Ms. D. Gregorio for tenure this evening. I'd like to next recommend Ms. Morgan Donahue for tenure this evening. Ms. Donahue is such a hard-working teacher in the classroom in the area of mathematics. Ms. Donahue, although receiving... being recommended for tenure this evening, has been with the school district for quite some time, and she has contributed in so many different regards. She is just so bright, so articulate, creative. She demonstrates a level of content area expertise that is quite impressive, and I say that as a former math teacher. Again, the expertise in mathematics, having visited her classroom, the "why" behind the mathematics is always very prominent, and that's always so important to me, is why are we learning this? And in a mathematics class, that's a question that's often asked. If you're in Ms. Donahue's class, that reason is often communicated to you. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Morgan Donahue for tenure this evening. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Ingrid Korn for tenure this evening. She's taught... Ms. Korn has taught various courses within the department and is dual-certified in Social Studies and Special Education. Her lessons are very well-thoughtfully prepared. They're detailed, they're rigorous, and there are multiple learning styles in mind. Having observed her class, I never thought a first-period or second-period class, it was early in the morning when I stopped in, that I could be so engaged in a world history lesson. It was absolutely phenomenal, and every subsequent lesson has been at that level as well. Ms. Korn's rapport with students is remarkable, and her collaboration with colleagues is terrific. In addition to all of the responsibilities within the classroom, Ms. Korn also coaches three seasons of cross-country in our school community. I think it's three seasons of cross-country, two, track and field. So the athletic director's in the back, he'll correct me. But three seasons of athletics, and that's absolutely remarkable. Her growth has been evident as a teacher. I've enjoyed watching her continue to develop and continue to coach and continue to be such an important part of our school community. So I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Korn for tenure this evening. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Stock for tenure this evening. Ms. Stock has done such a remarkable job with our chorus program here at Yorktown High School. She has expanded the program. We've achieved a high level of success, so to grow the program and to be successful in the program is truly a testament to Ms. Stock's hard work. In addition to all of the aspects of the music classroom that Ms. Stock engages in, she also oversees our drama club. And if anyone was here for the production of Fiddler on the Roof, I think you were absolutely floored by that performance, and that's a testament to Ms. Stock's work. So everything that Ms. Stock attempts to do will be done at a high level. We're confident of that. Her classes are engaging, they're rigorous, they use multiple teaching strategies, and I am delighted to recommend Ms. Stock for tenure this evening. And finally, I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Sudal for tenure this evening as a Library Media Specialist. It is with great pleasure that I make this recommendation because Ms. Sudal has done so much for our school library. She's increased STEM opportunities for students. She has created a teaching location within the library for classes to come. I actually visited Ms. Sudal teaching a class just a couple, maybe a month ago, where there was a class, it was actually Ms. Siliberto's class, that went into the library. So I observed that class, and I was just so impressed by what you've done with the library and the instruction that happens there. There's a Chromebook distribution station, a repair station, research tools and skills that are available. There have been so many enhancements to our library during your time here, and I look forward to the continued advancements and continued growth of the library. And Ms. Sudal is terrific with instructional technology. The lesson that I'm thinking of, that I saw, had all kinds of wonderfully engaging requirements that had the students experiencing a joy of learning. And for me, that's so important. That joy of learning means so much. I saw that when I stopped into your class, day in and day out. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Sudal for tenure this evening. What I will leave you with is what I started you with. Ten days out of ten. I'm looking at such promise, future of our district. Ten days out of ten is what our students deserve from you, and that's why you're here. We give your students ten days out of ten. And for anyone who's wondering about that reference, it's a Todd Whitaker book, What Great Teachers Do Differently. It's page forty-nine of the book. You'll love it. I have a small gift that's coming from you. I had supply chain issues, so it's on backorder. I expect it'll be here later in the week, so I will personally deliver them to your classrooms when they do arrive, but it's just a special recognition of this evening. The influence of a teacher is immeasurable. The impact... and I know we have administrators in the audience. You're all teachers first. The impact of a teacher is far greater than one can ever see. Congratulations on this next step, but remember, it's only just one step. There's a lot of promise. There's a long future, and I wish you all well. Congratulations. At this time, I'm just going to ask the tenure candidates to come back...
Wait, wait, wait. Can we do a couple of business items before you ask them to come up?
The reality is, it's not official until the Board of Education acts on it, so I can recommend all night, but it's meaningless until the board picks... so I'm going to step off to the side.
So there's actually three things we'd like to do tonight that are really happy news. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask for a point of order as well.
Sure.
So our first one is, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the tenure appointees listed below be granted tenure.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Congratulations, everyone. We have two other really good news pieces. So be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education appoints Deidre Amerling as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction tenure area to serve as a probationary term effective July 2nd, 2022 through July 1st, 2025. Ms. Amerling holds a district administrator SDA certification. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Board authorizes superintendent to execute the terms and conditions of employment agreement with Deidre Amerling dated July 2nd, 2022 as presented to the Board at this meeting.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Congratulations. We have one more. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education appoints Lisa Sanfilippo as the Assistant Superintendent for Business and the Assistant Superintendent for Business tenure area to serve a probationary term effective July 7th, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Ms. Sanfilippo holds a school district business leadership certification. Also be it resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent that the Board appoints Lisa Sanfilippo as Assistant Superintendent for Business leave replacement for the period of July 1st, 2022 through July 6th, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board authorizes the superintendent to execute the terms and conditions of employment agreement with Lisa Sanfilippo dated July 1st, 2022 as presented at this meeting.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Congratulations. Lisa, can you stand up and wave to everybody? All right, Ron, it's all yours again.
All right. So what I'm going to do, it's okay, is I'm going to invite all of the tenure candidates to come back onto the stage. I'd love to get just one group photo so that we can really remember what a great night tonight is. So please come back onto the stage. At this time, we're going to... the Board's going to take just a brief five-minute recess. It will give anyone who wishes to depart for the evening the opportunity to depart. You're welcome to stay. It's a great meeting. There are all kinds of things we're going to look at, policies and budget votes, but otherwise, have a great evening. otherwise have a great evening.[448.53][448.53](LAUGHTER)
All right, Jason, you ready?
Rolling.
Okay. Ron, thank you so much. That was a great job. Appreciate it. We are up to public comment number one. Yvette, did anybody sign up? Nope? All right. Going to move on to the superintendent's update.
So that was absolutely terrific. It was wonderful to acknowledge our tenure candidates. Yep. So with the tenure candidates comes some other great things that are happening in our school district. We have our -- Friday night, we had our middle school National Junior Honor Society induction. This was really special. It was the inaugural class, and we had ninety students inducted into the National Junior Honor Society at Mildred East Strang Middle School. Just a great, great event Friday night, a great recognition. My thanks to Mrs. Horowitz and her team for bringing the National Junior Honor Society to our middle school. It's something that's new, and I'm sure it will thrive for years to come. I also want to acknowledge the Yorktown High School bands. Last week, they had a wonderful in-person concert, just absolutely beautiful music. Families were here. They enjoyed the concert very much, and they did such a tremendous job. And today, our second graders held their I Love America concert, and it was absolutely beautiful. Patriotic music was the entire concert. And then after that, the families got to go back into the classroom, visit with the teacher, visit with their children in the classroom. There were ice pops that I assisted in distributing to some of the classrooms, and just another wonderful event at Mohansick School. I also want to congratulate the spring sports teams. I don't know what happened on the field today. It looks like we won today in lacrosse. Congratulations to our boys' lacrosse team. Our spring seasons are all winding down, and I just could not be more proud of the sportsmanship that our teams displayed. What I think I'm most proud of beyond the wins and loss records are the number of scholar-athlete teams that we have in our school district, and that's the entire average of the team exceeding a ninety threshold. I also want to say that we had a group of senior citizens come in and visit with us. It was wonderful to welcome our senior citizen friends back to our schools. It was -- I miss them. We miss them. Some of our board trustees joined in that visit. The next visit will be June 17. So if any of our friends are at home, June 17, we'll see you there. If you weren't aware of June 17, hopefully you're watching this, and someone tells you that Dr. Hatter's inviting you in for breakfast on June 17. So just a wonderful, wonderful morning with senior citizens in the town of Yorktown to come in, feel part of our schools, see what's happening in our schools. And I prepare a slideshow for our senior citizen friends when they come in, and we just really enjoy the conversation and the opportunity to connect and engage, have them engage in our schools. And then I also want to thank our school community for this last week's budget vote on Tuesday. Thank you for the support and for coming out to vote. With that said, I just want to reiterate congratulations for Ms. Amerling, who was appointed this evening as our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Ms. Sanfilippo, who was appointed this evening as our new Assistant Superintendent for Business. They have big shoes to fill. I will miss Tom and Lisa forever and ever and ever, and I'm looking forward to working very closely with Ms. Amerling and Ms. Sanfilippo moving forward. That concludes my report this evening. I also just want to update the board on a couple of items, actually. We have completed some of the book reviews. Those continue to be posted to our website. That is the most efficient way to get information. The most current information is to visit our website under the Good to Know section. And also, we had total transportation at our last meeting. They have committed to providing us with one electric bus for next school year, and those conversations continue to develop, and we're pleased to see the steps that they have taken as a company to enhance their operations. And also, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to invite our construction managers to an upcoming meeting. I'm not sure which meeting they'll be available to attend, but a conversation about space is something that I think would be important for us to have, what we're seeing, not only is growing enrollment, but growing programs, growing student needs, and we need to make sure that our facilities are equipped to be able to meet the needs of all of our students. So it's a conversation that I'm hoping we can engage our construction manager in. I've been working with them to review options and to just look at the physical plant, better understand the needs of our students and programmatic needs and enrollment needs so that we can make sure that our facilities are meeting those needs.
So this is under the guise of the contract that we executed with them earlier in the year to review all of our space issues, correct?
Correct. So we've been working throughout the year since the execution of that contract and before the year is out. We only have two meetings left for the school year, which is so hard to believe. I would like them to come out and present just what's happened this year, what have we been focusing on, and what are potential next steps for consideration.
Terrific. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right? You're done? All right. We're going to go on to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for April 2022?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Can I have a motion to approve the claims audit report for April 2022?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Can I have a motion to approve the extra classroom report for April 2022?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. If election inspectors, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby ratifies the action of the district clerk in utilizing the services of the following individuals as election inspectors for the annual meeting on May 17, 2022, and hereby appoint such individuals as elected inspectors known prone to whatever that is. Yvette, at a flat rate of $300, she had Mark Sarro, Janine LaRocco, and Nora Finn.
So moved.
Discussion. I just want to say, I watched Yvette. I was there at the election. She's a rock star when it comes to elections. She really is. She ran such a tight ship. She did a phenomenal job, and I didn't realize how much hard work it was until I actually watched her doing it. So I need a big thank you to Yvette for everything she did.
Thank you, Yvette.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Policy adoption. A motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. We have 4731, return of student work; 4680, student use of school equipment; 5680, I'm sorry; and 8330, authorized loan of district-owned material and equipment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Personnel agenda. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion of the following be approved under certified personnel. We have appointments, part-time and temporary appointments. Other compensation, we have extra duty, additions to the substitute list, and unclassified personnel. We have appointments to civil service, additions to the substitute list, police monitors, resignation for the purpose of retirement.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Ron?
I just want to give a couple words of congratulations. It's always bittersweet.
I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Joanne and her work and her efforts in the school district. She's been my right hand for quite some time, and she'll be missed and big shoes to fill. Another huge loss for us, but I wish her well. She wants to spend some more time with her grandchildren and move forward, and I'm wishing her well. She'll be missed.
Yes, she will be. All right. Business office. A motion to approve the contract with Pelagic Beast II LLC, owner of the Klondike Nine, for the Cron Pond Elementary School trips on June 8, 9, and 10 pursuant to the terms of the attached contract.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the attached amendments to the following rental contracts for space at French Hill. They are all listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Tax warrant resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent. The Board approves the tax warrant notification for the 2223 school year to the towns of Yorktown, Cortland, and Newcastle in the amount of $82,533 as calculated below. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Claims audit resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent. The President of the Board of Education of Yorktown Central School District is hereby authorized to approve the agreement with Steve Robyn, CPA, for claims auditing services for the 2223 school year at a rate not to exceed $95 an hour. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the agreement with Tobin and Company for internal auditing services for the 2223 school year in the amount of $15,000. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Resolve upon recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education authorizes the execution of the 2223 initial contract for the Lyric Bosse Services.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to amend the sixty-month lease terms for the central administration and PPS post machines due to vendor omission of a key functionality feature as follows. And I'm not going to read it because we've read it twice already.
So moved.
Discussion. Tom, what's going on with them?
In the initial lease, they forgot to price out the most important component of the machine, so we're amending that original lease.
So this price we're going back to is the original price that we were at?
Yes, this is the third iteration of the same one.
But it's the same price.
The same price as originally.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Budget transfers. A motion to approve the budget transfers is listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Special ed. A motion to arrange the following placements as of May 23, 2022.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Board comments. Lisa?
Sure. So first, Tom, does this mean you're not staying on?[1569.01][1569.01](LAUGHTER)
That's exactly what that means.
Oh, I was hopeful. But okay. Congratulations to all of those who were awarded tenure this evening, and welcome Ms. Amerling and Ms. Sanfilippo to Yorktown. Well, Deidre was already here, but welcome. We look forward to working with you next year. And speaking of next year, thank you to the community for allowing Rashmi, Cheryl, and I to serve another term. The voter turnout was overwhelming, and we are honored to continue on. So thank you to all of you for that.
Thank you, Rashmi.
Yeah, congratulations to everyone that made tenure tonight. I was happy to see that there was pretty much a consistent number across all our buildings, so I think that's always great. I also want to commend our music students for this past Saturday. They were here shortly after six in the morning. They played. It was a clinic, so they had adjudicators that came in, and it was really just such a wonderful event and an opportunity for the music department. And Tom, we'll miss you, of course, but I look forward to working with Mrs. Amerling and Mrs. Sanfilippo for next year, and thank you to the community for, like Lisa said, for another term.
Thank you, Mike.
I echo Lisa and Rashmi's sentiments. Congratulations to everyone this evening, and looking forward to working with the three board members again for the foreseeable future, so that's always nice. Tom, we'll miss you.[1673.26][1673.26](LAUGHTER) Glad that you're still here, but very excited that we have a very competent replacement in Lisa, and looking forward to working with her. And thanks to everyone that showed up here tonight. There was a really nice crowd. You probably may not have been able to see it on the video, but it's always enjoyable when we get to celebrate people in the district and that there's a great turnout of family, friends, and colleagues to be there with them and support them, so that's always wonderful. And lastly, thanks to the community for such a great turnout and for overwhelming support of our budget and the capital project reserve renewal. So thank you for that.
Yes, I agree. I do want to thank the community for the vote turnout we had. It was probably one of the highest vote turnouts we've had in a long while. It's great. It's wonderful. I actually wish more people would vote. Sorry, Yvette, I know it's more work, but the more people who express what they want, the better we understand things, and we understand they wanted this district to continue forward. So I was very appreciative of that. Congratulations to Rashmi, Lisa, and Cheryl. We look forward to working with you. Tenure night is always great. Ron, you did a wonderful job, so thank you very much, and you had to do it in a new venue, so you had to figure it all out, so thank you. Lisa and Deidre, we so look forward to working with you. We will miss Tom and Lisa, but you know, it's a new chapter, and we're going to move forward. We're going to do good, and we know where you live, and we can find you, Tom, don't worry.[1769.21][1769.21](LAUGHTER) For now. But just thank you, thank you to everybody, and as the year winds down, all the happy things happen, so please get out and see all the happy things that are happening in our districts. Enjoy it. Ron, Tom, anybody? Okay, we're going to do public comment number two. Did anybody sign up? Nope. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Good night, everyone.